Yes, Zachary Rundell, taken.
Hey, we're gonna have a public hearing before our regular council meeting, so call this public hearing to order, August 27, 2019. Public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving input on a proposed text amendment to the Green Hill zoning code, proposed text changes, text changes for section 1111, definitions and 1149.03 regarding wall signs. Letty Vaughn expound upon that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And just for the record, this has already gone through the Planning Commission in a public hearing, and they are recommending it to council for consideration, and that's the purpose of this public hearing. We do currently require channel letter signs for our wall signs, and you have in front of you the highlighted section that we are further defining channel letters as being individual three-dimensional letters. Would you like me to read through the changes? Or is it necessary for me to review the changes? Or either?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I'll be happy to. Okay, so the definition, it will be changed in two places, or added in two places. The first is under definitions for channel letter signs. Channel letter signs are individually illuminated letters and graphics. Acceptable forms are channel letters, or three-dimensional reverse channel letters slash backlit channel letters. Standard channel letters are individual three-dimensional letters consisting of a U-shaped, excuse me, of a U-channel base with translucent faces. Reverse channel letters are signs that have metal faces and returns, which are sides, but have a clear plastic backing. These letters are designed to be mounted an inch or two away from the wall or raceway. Open-faced channel letter signs are prohibited. Then it will also be inserted into the actual description of wall signs, and that text says, again, most of this is in there. Every commercial, business, industrial, or institutional use located in a non-residential zoning district may erect and maintain upon the structure of the building or portion of a building in which use, in which such use is maintained, either illuminated or non-illuminated signs. All wall signage is required to be three-dimensional, three-dimensional, excuse me, acceptable forms are channel letters, or three-dimensional reverse channel letters, backlit channel letters. Standard channel letters are individual three-dimensional letters consisting of a U-channel base with translucent faces. Reverse channel letters that have metal faces and returns, or sides, but have a clear plastic backing. These letters are designed to be mounted an inch or two away from the wall or raceway. Open-faced channel letter signs are prohibited.
Okay. Anybody want to make any comments?
Just to expound a little bit, it actually opens it up a little bit. When you say channel letters, as we had it before, it is a specific letter with the aluminum, typically aluminum side, plastic front. You can still have pretty much the same look and aesthetic appeal by having a three-dimensional letter, and that opens it up a little bit broader, and doesn't get, you know, just like you have to have this type of three-dimensional letter. So I think it's a good thing. It's, still accomplishes an aesthetically strong presence in the center of our village.
I noticed that opens and quotes, is that defined elsewhere in the chapter?
I'm sorry?
Is that open defined, or open-faced channel letters? Is that defined anywhere?
I think that's terminology for the type of face.
Okay.
Is that correct?
As long as it's understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
Okay, so, I've been in the shopping center for three years, going on four years, and I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. I really have a very hard time understanding why we are spending so much time on trying to define and ordinance the channel letterings to the nth degree, when we have businesses up there that are trying to make it, that are self-owned, not franchises. And, to me, it appears as if it would be better to have a sign that somebody's there than to have no sign and look like we belong in Skid Row. And I'm very sad to say, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go, I've seen a lot of businesses with no signs, I've seen a lot of businesses make us look like trash. But I find it very hard to understand why we are so insistent on channel lettering. We're not Hyde Park, we're not Wyoming or Glendale. We are the Green Hill Shopping Center. And I'd rather see somebody have a sign, or get fined, to take it down, or the police show up to take it down. It does not serve us as a community. I speak to people that live in Green Hills, they don't even know what's up there, because they can't put a sign up, because they can't afford channel lettering. I think it's truly very disappointing that we focus so much time on channel lettering in a community that's barely holding its head above water. I'd rather know what's in there than to not have a sign at all, which is what people are choosing to do. Thank you.
Pat Endon, 32 Chalmers Lane. I was rather amazed to see that you were having a public hearing on fonts or signage, given that you don't have public hearings on major things. And so, I would agree with Ms. Bender that this is kind of petty in some respects. Ms. Kovak referred that there was a prior public hearing, is that correct, on this matter?
A what?
You said that there was a prior public hearing with the Planning Commission.
Yes, with the Planning Commission, correct.
And what kind of notice was given to the public regarding that?
Same, that would have been given for this, same as required.
Were people that have businesses in the shopping center invited to come and participate?
Our notice was in the Green Hill Journal, Green Hills Journal.
Are you aware that some of those folks don't live in Green Hills, and do you really think that's very justified?
Okay, okay, let's just make your statement.
No, I'm not allowed to have dialogue with you, because...
We're not, just make your statement.
Okay, my statement is, is you guys are really inadequate when it comes to being a village council. How hypocritical to say you're having a public hearing on something that affects the economy and the livelihood of all these people, but yet you haven't even bothered to get in touch with them, to get their preferences? What background do any of you have? I know Mr. Halter has some kind of signage background.
Point of order, what does this have to do with signage?
I'm talking about signage that has something to do with the fact that what you guys are trying to shove down everyone's neck, it appears to be, you've done no research with the people you're affecting. You know, this is the kind of incompetence that leads people to have such disgust for you.
Okay.
Now, I don't have, my, my three minutes are up, and I have more to say when it comes to the regular meeting, but you are incompetent, Ms. Kovak, you have not notified the people that are affected, just as you did not notify people when it came time to tearing down buildings.
Okay. We're going off onto another subject, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I have a request to Mr. Forbes to define, when is it that this council is supposed to hold public hearings? And I expect that in writing. Thank you.
Have a nice day. Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing done, call this public hearing adjourned. All right, moving on. Regular council meeting for August 27, 2019. Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Metz?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Dries?
All right, we have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus, amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have is the council, regular council meeting minutes for July 23, 2019. Do we have any corrections, or additions, or amendments to make to that? Right, hearing done, minutes are approved. Okay. The, this is the time now for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thorough, for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Patricia Bender, and I live at 29 Handel Lane. I won't even take three minutes. I would like to have an opportunity that maybe Streets and Services could look at putting a light at the entrance on June Field. I noticed, driving with a friend of mine, in that she didn't even see the entrance, and it, we had, a couple of years ago, put up sensor lights that would light up the pole, but those are no longer there. So it's very, very dark at the entrance into Green Hills at June Field. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's reasonable.
Good evening, Pat Endon, 32 Chalmers Lane. Owned property here for over 42 years. First to Mr., to Chief Fertlemen's attention, there is a street light on Wynton Road that's burned out as you come in from the lake, and I'm, you know, I tend to report these things over and over, but it seems like the police department, that there's responsibility in terms of safety to make sure that those lights are burning, so you might want to have an assessment taken throughout the village, but the one on Wynton, coming in, there is one burnout.
We reported it to Duke last, this morning.
Thank you. I want to make a public record request at this moment for the following. I want a copy of the current rules of council. I want a copy of the minutes when there was an adoption for your special instructions to citizens for addressing council regarding this is not intended to be dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, questions will be recorded, manager's office for response, et cetera. A lot of us think that's so much bullshit. Who's holding you people accountable? We've got a video here that some people look at, but all of you sit up there on your little DS, acting like you don't have to respond to anything. And the arrogance of Mr. Moore is beyond reproach.
Thanks, Pat.
You have a real badge for that, you should just be wearing it constantly. So, in addition to my request for the rules of council, I want the minutes of when that was adopted, and to who voted for that, and if that actually is in accordance, Mr. Forbes, with the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Forbes, I would like to ask you to research the charter of the Village of Green Hills and the Ohio ordinances, and report to the council and to the public, and I want it in writing, about when are public meetings, public hearings required. Seems rather ridiculous that you hold public hearings for changing fonts on signs, but the Planning Commission even held a public meeting, even though nobody knew about it. But yet, you're destroying a hundred, or a million and a half dollars' worth of historic housing, and there wasn't a Planning Commission meeting on that? There was no Planning Commission meeting on, or a public hearing? There was no notice to any of the adjoining property owners? Just what is your responsibility? Because when we went to court, Mr. Forbes was rather embarrassed to be able to not even express to Judge Zayas that he had presented one piece of evidence to support why you tore down those buildings. You guys are gonna be eating that for a lot of ti, for a lot of years. It's called due process of law. And Judge Zayas made it very clear to him that that's how she saw this.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
In your historic overlay, it may sound irresponsible.
Your time is up, thank you, Pat, have your seat. Your time is up, have your seat.
You're gonna be paying to restore those buildings.
Have your seat, have your seat. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, the municipal manager, Vaughn Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the one thing I did want to point out this evening is just to let council know that our audit has started, and it's going quite well. I'm just feeling a lot of staff time right now is to be expected, but, once again, it's going well. So, it's really all I have to report right now.
Okay. All right, comments or questions? All right, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. With a brief update on the last piece of pending litigation that the village is involved in, the one that's in the Court of Appeals. Oral argument was held July 31st. And I guess I would just clarify to council, I wasn't embarrassed one bit at anything I had to present at that hearing. In fact, I was very proud to announce to that court that you did in fact follow every piece of code that you were required to. And with that, I would conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Clerk of Council, Barbara Paddle.
I'll be very brief. Over the past several weeks, I've just been taking an inventory of the office and locating electronic files. You noticed that I recreated some forms, I'll use those if you approve. And in addition, I also enclosed some information about the Colrain Jammer convo with the opportunities that you guys may be interested in. Even, over here. Oh, and finally, I'll probably, I will be in the office at least two hours per week, if you want to reach me.
Okay, thanks.
Is that, is that on a uniform time basis? Is it gonna be the same time, or would that be?
Well, right now, I've been coming in during the morning, all the time, anytime. That's it, thank you.
Comments?
Oh, and one more thing, I will change the font.
I kinda liked it, but that's...
Well, I thought it was a little bold, but...
A little bold, but I like it.
It's called Britannica bold.
You could use the same Britannica, but just don't use bold.
It's not, that's what it's called.
Yeah, but you can, there's a non-bold version of it.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
No, thank you.
That's for titles, but that's okay. It still functions.
I do like the format, thank you for...
Thank you.
Okay, chief of police, Neil Fertman.
Thank you, Mayor. At 1:35 in the morning on the evening of July 28th, Officer Eric Tricase and Rob Lenhoff investigated a suspicious vehicle. I had had two persons in and over in the B section. They were observed in the area with flashlights, or getting in and out of their vehicle, stopping in front of various homes while looking into cars with flashlights. When officers first saw the vehicle, the passenger door was open and the dome light was on. Officers were able to observe drug paraphernalia and a crack pipe inside the car. As officers interviewed the two, they admitted to entering multiple unlocked vehicles, taking cash and other items out of the cars. During a search of the vehicle, officers recovered stolen items with residents' names, a key fob from alarm system, medicine, radar detector, a .380 pistol magazine, first aid kit, cigarettes, and many high-value gift cards. Officers also found drugs belonging to the suspects. In total, there was over 20 stolen items that were found belonging to 20 different victims in our community, and they were taken from 13 different cars. Two individuals were charged with eight offenses, including driving under suspension, two counts of theft, two counts of receiving stolen property, and two counts of criminal mischief. This type of offense is typically driven by drugs, and the usual mode of operation is to look for cars that are unlocked, and that are easy targets, and also might have items of high value. So we remind anyone that might be listening to please, please lock your car if you have any valuables in it, you should secure them, or best, you should take them out of the vehicle. That will almost always prevent these type of crimes. They happen in various communities throughout the greater Cincinnati area. They will go from community to community looking for easy targets. And we would urge residents, if they see anyone that looks suspicious, we'd rather check them out and send them on their way if everything's fine, than miss out an opportunity to apprehend a perpetrator and have a resident victimized. Coming up, in this very room, in just a few weeks, we're gonna have a pre, free personal safety, self-defense course. It's going to be on Saturday, September 14th. It'll run from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00. We're gonna provide some snacks, which will be fruit snacks and water. Officer Zach Clark, who is a state-certified self-defense instructor, will be taking the class, and we hope that you consider signing up for it. If you need any additional information, you can find that on our website, as well as the signup form, or just give us a call at 825-2101, we'll be happy to tell you all about it. We had two officers that were honored recently during the intermission of one of the concerts on the commons on August 7th. Two officers, Eric Tricase, who I mentioned before, and is seated right at the back of the room, and his fellow officer Cody Ritchie, were both honored for lifesaving actions. In the case of Officer Tricase, it was for a guy that used to sit right there, former council member Bud Walderman, who collapsed while walking his dog, and Eric was able to use CPR and resuscitate Mr. Walderman before the squad was even close. We checked with the paramedic that was on the scene, he said without a doubt, his life was saved by the intervention of the officer, so. And Cody Ritchie had another incident with a resident on Farragut, so we're very grateful to those officers for the jobs that they did, and they were rewarded accordingly. We remind residents, we're back to school, school started on August 19th. An average of 30 pedestrians are killed every year while getting on and off school buses, and crashes kill almost 200 annually and injure an estimated 18,000 persons across our nation. So, please stay alert for children on our roadways, remember the rules for stopping when a school bus has its flashing red lights on, and be on the lookout for our little ones. Speaking of our little ones, the Forest Park Steppers, the We Thrive Group, the Forest Park Community Control, Forest Park and Green Hills Police, Forest Park Fire, and Walmart, all contributed to ensure that all students in our system started school year with proper supplies. We were stationed outside of the Walmart on Friday, August 2nd. We had volunteers there gathering to collect equipment and supplies from the shoppers there and accept donations. Those collected items were then distributed later in the month to the school system for distribution to the kids that were in need. Then, also this month, mentioning schools, on August 15th, in conjunction with Forest Park Police and Springfield Township Police, we conducted an all-day critical incident exercise. We do those, we do periodic tabletop exercises, this year was a full exercise, and we did tabletops at the remaining schools. I participated in that along with Lieutenant Ward and Sergeant Patton, and those exercises have grown increasingly more complex, and we learned from every school shooting, so we actually based this incident on one that occurred within the last year over in Richmond, Indiana. And we give our thanks to Steve Denny from the school system, who put together all the detailed planning and coordination for this event. Not to mention Officer Tricase for a third time, but I'll go ahead and do it, he just completed his field training officer school, so he will be serving as an instructing officer for any new recruits we might pick up, and he's been with us for six years, and we hope he stays for a couple times that amount. We have had some fun with some of the scooters, the electronic scooters that are now prevalent in the downtown Cincinnati area. They somehow seem to make them their way into the suburbs. We have called the companies that are responsible for those scooters. We picked a couple, they've come and picked a couple of those up. We still have one that hasn't been claimed yet, so we'll notify them again, and if they don't claim it, then you might see our officers having a new mode of transportation, riding around the community. Residents in our community never cease to amaze me in how they come to our aid. On August 14th, a resident posted the following on Nextdoor Green Hills. "Hi, my name is Sean, and I'm new to the Green Hills neighborhood. I moved here because I found a better house. Thought this would be a wonderful neighborhood to raise my five nieces and one nephew, who were placed in my home by Children's Services." And what she went on to ask for was some clothes and some gently-used bookbags. The response was overwhelming from our community. We also had residents contact us and say, "What can you do to help on our behalf?" And we received some donations, and one of our officers took Sean shopping and purchased several hundred dollars' worth of clothing. They closed the gap from what was donated to her earlier. And those funds were donated by our residents to help those in need. In addition, our mayor and his wife donated a children's bed that the resident gratefully accepted, and I think it speaks overwhelmingly of all the good that's in our community. By the numbers for the month, we investigated five accidents, seven crimes, 375 other incidents. We had 624 contacts with our residents, 322 of those were dispatched or received by telephone, and 302 were self-initiated by police officers. The department provided assistance to the public in 760 instances. We assisted other agencies 59 times, made 32 criminal arrests and AD2 traffic arrests, or citations. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Can I answer questions to the chief?
I have a question, the self-defense class goes from what time to what time?
It is from, I'm gonna double-check and make sure that I believe it's 10 until 2, and it'll be right here in the council chair. It'll look a little different.
Would you sign me up, please?
I certainly would.
Thank you.
All right, I have a mayor's court report, July 31st, Sandy and Bank Balance, it's Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, $1,886, to Hamilton County, $63, and to the Village of Green Hills, $9,916. And I will make a comment as it relates to the traffic light at Witten, at Sharon Road in June Field, and that intersection's considered to belong to the city of Forest Park, and...
I think she was talking about, like, a street light.
Street light or traffic light?
Just a light to show the...
Yeah, a street light.
Street light, okay.
To light up the entrance.
Because we tried to get a traffic signal there at one time, and the state would not approve it.
See the street.
Okay. And so, Vaughn will have to look at that. If it's, depending on the location, it's either in Forest Park's jurisdiction, or possibly, if we bring it back further, we could put one in our jurisdiction.
I do think it's a good idea where we can light dark spots, so...
Yeah, definitely.
I agree.
It could just be a solar light, it doesn't even have to be a...
Well, we have to go by what Duke would allow.
Yeah, or that, or that, too.
Okay, committee reports. Recreation Cable TV, Maria Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report that we had a meeting with staff, and we're going to have the community day at the pool this coming Saturday, which is August the 31st. We will be serving between 2:00 and 4:00, and I would like for everybody to come and join us there at the pool. The members will receive a special gift, but we're going to be cooking, well, not we, that's kind of wishful thinking, is Mr. Lee will be roasting things there, or cooking in the grill, and so would be Mr. Halter there.
Got a quick question, though. Is it considered a community day at the pool? Is it considered a membership day at the pool?
It's a membership for the gifts for the members, but it's open to everybody that is at the pool that day.
Okay.
That will be served.
But I didn't know, when we say community day at the pool, sometimes that means free access for community...
No, that, no, you still is observing that, yes.
Right, so, just to clarify.
And people that are going to be taking...
So, people still have to pay...
So people still have to pay to get in?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, anybody that would like to bring a side dish to share, that would be great, and we're going to put some of the advertisement for everybody to be able to reach us. There will be a one call, and it will be on the website, et cetera. So again, please keep this in mind, and this is Saturday, the 31st. Hopefully, it's going to be beautiful, shining, sunshining weather, and there is a rain date for the Sunday, but I hope that we don't have to use it. We did that last year. Also, would like to share with you that there's, October 5 is the Harvest Fest, and everybody, please mark that in your calendars. We would like to have you present. And the last meeting that I attended away cross was on June 12, because that's quarterly, so there's another one coming in September. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions?
I just want to comment on the Harvest Fest. If anybody wants to volunteer at the Harvest Fest, we also need a lot of volunteers, so contact us.
Can I make up for Doug Kohler?
Oh, yes.
Going to be coming out of an operation, so-
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
No pun intended, but the backbone of that event typically.
Yeah.
All right, General Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report for the committee at this time.
Okay. Services and Streets, Natasha Metz.
Happy to be back after over a month of traveling, but nothing to report for Streets and Services.
Okay. All right. And Community Development, Jeff Halter.
Yes, I'd just like to briefly talk about the channel letters. I don't believe an inordinate amount of time was spent on it at all. It might look that way from the outside, but it is, we need to follow the law and the procedure, and there's going to be some things that look like, why are we bringing this forth? Well, the reason we're bringing it forth is we're trying to follow protocol, not trying we are following protocol, and that's what we have to do. The proposal actually should make for a more affordable option for 3D letters. Granted, it's not saying, yes, put a piece of plywood up and just paint on it with a brush. So we're trying to maintain the aesthetic. It is the centerpiece of the village, a very important part, but this change should make for a more affordable form of 3D letters. So it's not trying to be insensitive to those that are struggling and starting a business because it's an expensive thing to do, and there's a lot that's involved with, you know, starting any business. So I think it's a good change, and I think we did the right thing. End of my report.
Safety, Melanie Hermes.
I had a meeting with staff today. We talked about some items that I have requested be brought to council in a work session. Some of them are concerning our peddler and solicitor ordinance, and also modification of our impound ordinances, and also collection of a fee for recites, but I've asked them to be brought to work session since my committee is missing a member, and this way I can get the full input from council before going forward with any of the items. And no upcoming meeting pending another appointment to the committee.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Relative to the light issue at June Field, is that, would that be in safety or Streets and Services, I guess is the question?
Probably Streets and Services.
Okay. All right. Let Yvonne look into that to-
That's fine.
-give a report.
All right.
Okay. And Finance and Audit, then Mr. Dries is not here, and-
I'm his co-chair, but we don't have a meeting.
Effective, well, wait a second.
Okay.
Effective to September 1, Mr. Dries will be moving out of town and resigning from council. So Maria, do you want to report anything?
We haven't had a meeting. I'm the co-chair for that committee, so now waiting for the appointment to be able to join it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. All right, New Business, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers, 2019-23F. Can I add to that?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution Number 2019-23-F. Resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfer, whereas the 2019 annual appropriations that we adopted on December 11, 2018, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705, period 3685. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1. Since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2019, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2019. The fund description appropriations and change in total, Section 2. None, I'm sorry, none. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriating monies, from the general fund account 1000 to police account number 2909, the amount is $200,000. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force from after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Moore, Mr. Mayor, I request to move to adoption of this resolution.
Second. Been moved in second. Any comments or questions?
The only comment that I wanted to make was the general, is for the general operations for the police department, and once that they had the monies requested and received from taxes, then it just has to be passed to the other account.
All right, Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Hems?
Aye.
Hermes? Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 29-23-F passes. Calendar. Got anything?
Community day at the pool on the 31st.
31st, at what time?
The survey, survey of the luncheon would be from 2:00 to 4:00, and the Harvest Fest is on October 5.
Okay.
Self-defense class.
That's September 14, the self-defense class.
September 14, right here.
10 to 2.
From 10 to 2.
Please turn in a form so we know you're coming that week before.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No.
All right, meeting adjourned.